Right, right. Yeah, Brett and I own part of hometown title. Soon to be three years old. We started at just two and a half.
All right, I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. And if everyone please rise for a moment of silence. Chris, if you'd lead us in pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Ron Bacon.
Here.
Pat Brooks.
Here.
Rob Demmett.
Here.
Brad Overton.
Here.
Richard Reed. Rick is trying to call in on FaceTime right now, but we're having some difficulties.
Pat sitting in his chair.
And Greg is here.
In the back getting hold of you.
In the back. And Chris Wetstein.
Here.
All right. All right, this is Rick Reed, and he's joining us via FaceTime tonight. All right, the first item on the agenda is a tabled item for an appointment to TRICAP. The current member was not, did not want to continue serving, so we do have some information from TRICAP. For, does anyone have a?
Make a motion that we appoint Jennifer McGee.
There's a motion on the floor for Jennifer McGee by Greg. He's there, second. And a second by Ron. Hey, Rick, when you're, would you care to mute yourself until we call on you? Because we're getting, we're getting a lot of, we're getting a lot of push or feedback.
Okay.
All right, thanks, I appreciate that. And that was Greg and Ron, is that right?
Oh, right, oh, yeah.
Ron, okay. All right, we got a motion on the floor by Greg and a second by Ron for Jennifer McGee for TRICAP appointment from the council. Any comment or discussion? All right, all those in favor?
We have to roll call.
We'll need a roll call vote.
Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Pat Brooks.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Aye.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Yes.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
All right, motion carries seven zero. All right, the next item on the agenda is Health Department Business and Additional Appropriation Contractual Services, $449,238.64.
Hello, Regina Hudson with the Health Department. Forgive me that I have this one arm, I'm trying my best here. So she's going to pass out a little bit about the plans for funding for 25. I've kind of given you some bullet points that have to do, go along with the core services, what kind of programming we're going to initiate and provide with the funding. Also included is our overall community health plan for the year, and then also our three key KPIs that we'll be working on. I don't want to read you everything that's in here, but it goes along with statistically where we are related to the other counties within the state, how we rank, where our needs are, the things we can implement to better address the needs of our community. Cliff's also here to talk a little bit about how we're going to do that with the funding going into contractual services, especially with Vanderburg County Health Department to help us meet the needs. They've been doing STIs for a long time for us, sexually transmitted infections and the pre-to-three program. So basically, the money will go towards all those things that are needed and are required with the Health First Indiana funding. I know it's a lot, but it's a lot to implement.
All right, so I'll just open the floor for discussions or comments from the board. This is the first time that we've had a chance to look at this.
I would have appreciated if we had this in advance so we could review it. I mean, I'm new, but I'd like to kind of know all the other offices have budgets, what we're spending where.
And we did present that, we did send that all to council the end of last year, but it was a very lengthy, like 15-page thing the state requires us to do with very small print, but it was submitted at the end of last year. This is an easier way to read it, so that's why I typed this up for you guys, but it has been presented in the past.
Do you have a copy of the other plan?
Sidney has it, hang on just one second.
While they're getting that, the reason why I'm here, Cliff Whitehead, county attorney, kind of talked about the legal effects of, number one, if the council does not appropriate these funds, and number two, the safeguards that the Health Board, the Health Department, and the county commissioners are ready to put in place even after these funds are appropriated. So on, on the first point, by the county accepting these, this local Health Board funds, we have agreed to accept these funds and appropriate these funds for these core services. We reached out to the State Department of Health, and they did inform us that if we, or if the council fails to or refuses to appropriate, we would be in violation of the statute. And their words are, if the funds are not appropriated, the Indiana Department of Health said that they may take enforcement action under an Indiana code, which included, which could include suspending of funding both now and in the future. So there are some legal ramifications if the council decides not to appropriate these funds, number one. Again, number two, as far as the safeguards that we're ready to implement, we are asking that they be appropriated into contractual services. However, what we have, the safeguards we put in place is, number one, before any of that money is actually spent through a contract, one, a contract will be prepared, prepared by myself, in essence, submitted to that negotiation process with a third party, which may be Vanderburg County. The contract then will be submitted to the Health Board, who will then review and vote on it. Then it will be submitted to the commissioners to, again, review and approve it before any funds are spent. So we wanted to put in those kind of multi-layer safeguards so that the council can be assured that just because you appropriate this money doesn't mean it'll be spent tomorrow by just the Health Department. It'll go through those channels. But again, one reason why I'm here is to express that, number one, but also to express that if the council does not appropriate, we are in violation of that statute. And then again, we can answer, as far as these core services, I'm sorry we're not presented to you before. They are in line with other services. We've had some great communications with Vanderburg County, who has agreed to help us on a contractual basis with what some of these services. The Vanderburg County Local Health Officer has been great to work with, so we have some really good partners to kind of help us maybe get back on track a little bit. So that's, that's why I'm here.
From the last meeting, I was concerned about having a plan. You have a plan, so you guys are the experts. I'm just wanting to know, you know, where the money's going, what you just informed about the contracts bringing to us, I think that's what's important. I think that's what I needed to know tonight, so thank you.
Well, I think you might want to maybe backtrack just a minute, because I think the contracts were going to the commissioners and not coming before us for the contractual services item.
Yeah, before, yes, okay, thank you, Brad, for saying that.
Just, I just wanted to make sure that was clarified for you.
Thank you.
Unless I misspoke, is that correct?
The, the, maybe I misunderstood you, the contracts would go first to the Health Board.
Right.
Then to the, well, first to the county attorney, myself, and my firm, then to the Health Board, then to the commissioners.
Right, so they're not coming to us.
They would not, that's not typically part of your, you know, your powers and duties.
Yeah, so just so that would be clarified, we're not necessarily going to have any purview over those contracts. Sorry, I don't like this door being open, drives me nuts, but I guess.
And by statute, contracts have to be approved by the commissioners.
That's correct. And if you would add a, want to add another layer, I mean, we'd be happy to share those contracts with you. Again, the point is to make sure everybody understands how the money is spent, where it's being spent, and it's not just being spent without any checks and balances.
I guess a couple of things that I would like to kind of ask here is where, because the dollar amounts that were presented to us last year basically focused around adding employees. I know there was an increase in nurses, and I don't remember the exact numbers, but that seemed to be where the majority of the costs were going to be applied to. We do have a list of, a bullet point list of items here, but I don't see where the funds are allocated towards any of these particular services. I mean, they are, you know, listed here, but I don't see where those funds are being, how they're being distributed between, for these particular services. Do you have some additional information for that? And I guess I didn't know, are you acting, who's the actual Health Department Administrator currently?
I'm interim administrator.
Okay, so we still don't, there isn't an actual administrator as of yet, is that correct? Or, and not to jump to another topic, but are we, where are we at in that stage of hiring somebody permanently? Because that makes me a little more uncomfortable is not having the person who's going to be in charge of the department has actually reviewed any of this, and so I'm a little, that gives me a little hesitation as well.
And I understand, we are working on that. Again, there's a process to find the right candidate, to go through the Health Board, to go through the commissioners, so we are working on that. We are as fast as we can. It's the appropriation with the Department of Health telling us, you're in violation if you don't appropriate these funds, so.
So have they given, I mean, I hate to, don't mean to cut you off, but do they give us like a deadline, like next week or next month, or?
They have not given us a deadline.
So I guess my question would be, if we perhaps gave you a, you know, more of a timeframe as to coming back with, hey, this is where we're spending these dollars, and then we've got someone in place, or we're knocking on the door of someone, then that would make me feel more comfortable, because I think the budget that was submitted to the state only had an allocation of roughly $31,000 for contractual services. And I think this is like $450-something thousand that's going into contractual services.
So I can send you the budget that outlines everything as far as equipment supplies, education, software, everything that's needed to implement these services. We didn't get the additional positions agreed upon, I guess, through council or whomever, to be able to hire more people. To be honest, we have no applicants. Right now, nobody really wants to work for the Health Department, we have no real applicants for an administrator either. I've been offered the administrator position, it would cut my pay, so I'm not the actual administrator at this time.
And just to speak, I think there's still, we're seeing options to contract out some of these services while we're asking for contractual services to keep the money put in there. Because if we can contract out, for example, to Vanderburg County, we don't want to hire people because those services will be provided by that third party, either Vanderburg County or somebody else. So we're not going to stop looking for somebody, we do think it's important to have somebody in place, but we don't want to hire three people if we don't need three people, so it's a little bit of a chicken and the egg, a little bit. But I understand your concern.
The other question I have, and I'm granted new, still learning, but anytime in other offices, the contracts are approved by the commissioners, but the money already has to be there in a breakdown so that the commissioners aren't approving things that the council doesn't have money for. And then we have to come in and put money in. To me, it still should, this, the different items, when we have an estimated amount, this is $500,000, this is, it's still, to me, and you go through the other channels, and I understand that, but it still should come, we're responsible for the money, and that's the bottom line. I personally think that the amount should come back here like every other office has to do.
Yeah, I think, I don't disagree that, yes, best practice is you know exactly how much you're going to spend on every single contract at the beginning of the year. But in practice, you don't always, we don't, for example, know how much a third party may charge us for these. So, yes, I would love to know for a contract at Vanderburg County to do number two, it's going to be $13,405. We just, we don't know that at this time, and so I wish we had all that, we just, we just don't.
Well, I don't think any of the offices, we don't, in the past, we didn't, we didn't know how much this is going to cost, if Daniel Law is going to go into place, or whatever it was. But you make an estimate, so we get an idea of breakdown, and then my opinion is, we should, the council still should approve, even maybe before it goes to the commissioner. I know there, as long as we follow law, but I think the council should have a say in it, that's my opinion.
Has Vanderburg agreed to do this, some contract, or where are we at on that?
We don't have any agreement yet in place. They have indicated that they would be willing to help us with certain services as we talk through exactly the scope of work. So it is a little bit about getting the money in place first so that we know what we have to deal with, or how much we have to decide.
If we don't have these contracts, the services wouldn't be done.
And then we'd be in violation of the statute.
Yes.
I have, if I may, Cliff.
Um, yes, of course.
Okay, so just a thought process from what I'm hearing from them. Would it be possible to, when you go seek the contract and find out the amount that we appropriated as each individual contract, and you come back and say, we're going to, we're going to contract for whatever it is with Vanderburg County for $60,000, and then the council would appropriate the $60,000? I don't think anyone is saying they don't want to appropriate the money. I think they just don't want a blank check sitting there without an idea how much it's going to be.
And also with the commission, I mean, I feel that we need to know the commissioners have approved or go along with the contract for the amount of money that we're talking about appropriating, because we don't know that. We're, they're on their purview, and we're here, but I think we need to know that they're comfortable with what they're doing and how this is going along, because they're over the Health Department, and if the contract's going to work with what they want to do.
Yeah, I think that's fair, and I think the, because of the circumstances right now, we don't know if the state has, there is a deadline for them to say, you haven't done this by X date, therefore you're not in compliance. So because we don't know that yet, I don't, I don't think I have an issue with that. My next call, email will be back to the state tomorrow if the council does not approve this, to say, hey, I shall make sure, do we have a deadline? Because if they do say yes by February 10th, or whatever it is.
Well, I think we're also doing a lot of implying to the state that the council is not going to appropriate it, and that's not what needs to be communicated to them. What needs to be communicated to them is that they want to see what we're doing specifically with the dollars, okay? And, and so that there isn't a conflict with the state. And just so you know, I did get an SBOA opinion, and they said to treat it like any other fund in the county, and it could stay in the cash account until they provide information for you to appropriate. So we got conflicting information.
Well, you're talking about two different statutes.
Correct.
Right, so SBOA, I completely agree that from a budget standpoint, you're right, that they are right, that it could stay in the cash account.
Right.
But from the statute for the local Health Board fund, we are not in compliance right now. And so we really just care, okay, what are you going to do about it and when State Department of Health? I don't have that information. Well, I know what they're going to do about it, but I don't have the when. And so, yes, back to your point, because I don't have the when, and they haven't told us the when, the plan that you laid out, I think would be fine unless they say, no, no, the when is February 15th, March 1st.
Correct.
Yes, yeah, and, and, no, I, we have communicated exactly to the state, for the, for the state Health Department, what the council is wanting. We have not said the council has refused or anything. We're just, we're trying, I'm new as well, I'm new as well, so I'm trying to learn, try to understand, try to rebuild some of this stuff so we understand what it's going to use for. And I know one concern was check and balance, and so that's something we came up with. But to your point, yes, we're happy to go along with that plan. I'll reach out to the State Department of Health, make sure they're okay with that plan, knowing that it could take 10 months to fully appropriate all the funds.
Correct.
And see if they're okay with that.
Right.
Have they, excuse me, is this the first time that the Health Department, or, excuse me, State Board of Health has seen this plan also? Or you said, I can't.
No, it was submitted in our detailed budget at the end of last year.
To the, to the state board of health.
It's not in this detailed budget, it's not. Because the, because what you're wanting to do with this money, there was only $31,000, a lot for that. So what would you have to do with the state in order to correct that?
We thought we brought the right budget with us, we thought we brought the right pieces of paper with us, we didn't actually get the right one today. But the expanded budget that we had to do for the 2025 funds is line by line exactly where the money's going, for what pieces, for what ordering of what, for what equipment.
Okay, and that's what you sent to them.
And that's what's been.
Okay. Is that for the 1.2 million?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's.
And then my question is, why hasn't that been brought to us until now?
To my knowledge.
Because we've asked for the, when, when, originally, correct me if I'm wrong, when this was asked to us for the money, we asked what it was going to be used for. And all we got was hire some nurses, for no plans. We wanted, we asked at those meetings, I can go back and look at the minutes, but I think I directly stated, what are the plans for six new nurses? What are they going to do?
Right.
And we couldn't get that answer.
Right, and that's what this is.
But if you had that back then, why didn't we not get it?
I don't know why it wasn't presented to you in that way, we had a lot of different things going on.
I understand, but I'm just, that's why I want to bring this up, and this is the first time we've seen this.
Right.
But not the first time that we've asked for it.
Right. And I think what I, what we can do is regardless of what the State Department of Health says, whether they see that plan as fine, or if they say, no, here's the deadline, we will make sure you have, as soon as possible, all of the breakdown, the complete breakdown, and what we would ask if there's any further questions, however you want to communicate that to us, or to me, or through Crystal, whatever you guys think is best, so that, well in advance of the next meeting of the council, you're fully informed, and there's no questions, I will make sure that's done.
I think that's the right way to go, I mean, this is what we've asked for, is what, we don't want to, we don't want to lose the money. We want the money that's out there to be used to help our constituents in any way that we can, and at the best that you can feel that they need to be done, but we still need to know what the plans are and what we're going to do with that. How much money it's going to cost, is there contracts, I mean, there's a lot to go through with commissioners, contracts in place correctly, and so forth.
I thought having Cliff on board is really going to help that line of communication a little bit.
Sure, I understand, and I'm sure he will. We know him well, so, and I appreciate that, okay.
Thank you.
So, hang on just a second, so it seems to me like, I remember an email that this was supposed to be appropriated by January 1st. Am I mixing up a different topic? I thought there was something.
There, there is, but it's whether they're going to take any enforcement action.
Exactly.
Because now, obviously, it's, it's February 4th.
Right, exactly, that's where.
We, so that's why I want to make clear, we are out of compliance.
That's where I was going with this, Cliff, I, it seems the urgency is, is that we're kind of already in violation from the September, I mean, the January 1st deadline, and the concern is you don't want to lose it, no one wants to. So how do we appropriate it to be in conformance and put in the guidelines that are being suggested? I think it's pretty kind of what it is, isn't it? I mean, am I wrong? But, you know, to appropriate it, put in some guidelines, and move forward.
The letter here, and I don't know who Michelle Turner is, but it does say in her letter, it says, "The 2024 funds do not need to be appropriated immediately, but when they are needed, as the local level." Now, I take that to mean they don't have to be appropriated immediately.
Pat, Debbie Bennett Steersman, I've been working with Health Department, there are two pots of money. 2024, there was around 600-some thousand, I can't remember exactly, that was appropriated, and the Health Board had to appropriate that when they first opted in, and they were to spend that during 2024. There are funds left over, that has not been appropriated yet. Starting January 1, the Health Board knew what they were going to get and the match from the county, and yes, that was to be in last year when the county was going through their budget, and they did submit a budget to the state. I think you've got copies of it right now. That is the current budget that's still on the website. So it was approved by the state, but it's a working document that is, it mimics what the county council's doing. So the one online's not correct right now, but that's the one they have. That makes any sense?
Oh. Rick, did you have anything?
I think we need more detail, and I think we ought to make a motion to, to send this to the next meeting.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I believe that's a motion by Rick to table. Is there a second?
I second it.
And a second by Pat. Any additional discussion? The only thing that I would say is if there is, if something does come up, Cliff, where there's, I mean, if they tell you tomorrow that we need to have something done in, you know, a couple of days, I mean, I think we'd all would be willing to do, you know, if we needed to do an emergency session or something to make sure, you know, I think we could all come up, at least four of us, we could get something together to do that. So I think we would definitely be, you know, willing to, to perform that, and then, I mean, and at the least, I think, at the very least, by that time, even if it was something very quickly, you know, just a, you know, a breakdown of this information that was supplied to us, you know, with an estimated amount, I think, would seem sufficient for most of us, so.
And just because the council's time, I know, is obviously valuable, I would push back if the state says you have to have it done within a week, because we've been very open with them about this process, how we're still working through it, so if all of a sudden they come up with a new deadline, I would try to push back. But I will definitely keep the council informed.
And at least tell them next meeting.
Exactly, yeah. I know Crystal loves special meetings.
Yes.
Oh, we all do. So we have a motion on the floor. Was that Ron?
Rick.
No, I was here. It wasn't.
Rick and Pat.
It was an R and a second.
By Pat.
I'll always.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call.
Roll call.
I wrote that.
Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Pat Brooks.
I'm sorry.
The tape, motion to table.
Your motion.
Yes.
Rob Demmett.
Yes.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Yes.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
Motion to table carries seven zero.
Thank you.
And I really do appreciate everybody coming tonight and providing us with some additional information. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the regular meeting dated January 7th, 2025. I knew there was an email with one update made, I think, on the chief.
Yeah, she found that one, I found another one. On page two, third item down, Economic Development Advisory Board, motion to retain, it says Rob Bacon. Supposed to be Ron Bacon.
Or Rob Demmett. We made a lot of motions on one of those.
That's all I found.
Anyone else have anything?
There was, did you look at the, there was, it says six nay, or seven zero? And it was six one, according to mine, so I caught the same thing you did.
I missed that vote.
Anyway, that was the only thing I found.
That was ten. Unless there's some other additional changes, we'll take a roll call vote for approval of minutes.
Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Pat Brooks.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Yes.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Yes.
Greg Richmond.
That's what I was just getting ready to think, did we even make a motion to approve those minutes as we were going through, I wasn't going to interrupt, but.
I'll make a motion, and I'll second, it had to be Rob Demmett.
There's a motion by Ron and a second by Rob.
Uh, where was I? Richard Reed.
Yes.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
And we'll amend that, that motion.
I have no idea why I didn't make any mistakes.
We'll strike that from the minutes.
Me either.
You do great.
Me either.
Keep it up.
All right, next item on the agenda is item number two, Tax Phase End Confirming Resolution, Warwick New Company LLC. is item number two, tax phase in confirming a resolution, Warwick New Company LLC.
Good evening, Steve Rowley, Economic Development, here tonight for the confirming resolution for the phase in for Warwick New Co., which we know better as Alcoa. I'm joined again tonight by LP Clement here in the audience, who's the plant manager for Alcoa Warwick. Tonight's step two of two of a phase in, last month was the, was the preliminary resolution, tonight's the confirming resolution, and since all seven council members were present, I'll be extremely brief. This is a new investment out there at Alcoa. We all know how important Alcoa has been to our history, how important they are as a stakeholder, as an employer, as a taxpayer, to our present, and this is an investment in their future and their sustainability here in Warwick County. It's about a $40 million, it's a much larger investment, but there's $40 million of abatable personal property, which is the manufacturing equipment that qualifies, that's what they're going after for two value-added lines, an EC rod mill, and a small ingot production, as they look to the future of what they can produce out there at Alcoa. Forty-one new employees with this project, starting salary out there is at the upper end of manufacturing, starting between $28 and $32 an hour, it's been approved by the Economic Development Boards, the Redevelopment Commission unanimously, and I'll just leave it at that unless you have any questions for myself, LP, or all the information that was in your packet last month.
Make a motion to approve. Oh, you got to read it.
I go ahead and read this, resolutions, resolution number 2025-03, a resolution confirming the declaration of an economic revitalization area for personal property tax phase in Warwick New Co. LLC, also known as Alcoa. There's a motion on the floor by Greg to approve resolution number 2025-03, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
And there's a second by Ron. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Discussion.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I guess we could have a discussion.
I, first of all, I just, I did that on purpose, as Steve knows, he's kind of grinning at me there. LP, I want to thank you for coming, I appreciate that, you were here last month, very good of you to come. And sometimes our silence is a bit, I don't know what word to use, but it's kind of strange sometimes, we're so quiet, you know, in your case, last month, we were so quiet, and I thought, well, I can't just let you, that happen again. So I just wanted to ask you more of a curiosity question. Sometimes comes up in conversation when I'm with folks is, how are the large employers right now, like, say, Alcoa, with staffing? Are you having difficulty staffing, and these 41 new jobs, getting good people, retaining them? What do you see with that?
I'm LP Clement, the site manager, on staffing, we actually started a third line of production in 2024, where we hired 150 employees for the site. So in terms of hourly employees, we're actually doing pretty good, and we still have a pretty healthy bank of candidates for upcoming positions. So I don't foresee any issues for those 41 position, we're still very active to recruit, so once we have those projects approved, it's going to take a few years to get everything lined up, so for sure, we'll have the strategy to hire those persons, but I don't foresee any issues.
So you're able to get good people and get good people?
Yeah, we're still, like I said, we're still pretty active in different, different places, but overall, we have a pretty good bank right now of employees. We're still hiring for some of the open positions that we have, and like I mentioned, we hired 150 employees just last year for the site.
Good, I think a lot of it was during COVID, we all saw the signs, help wanted everywhere, and it's like, okay, so it's all kind of leveled out?
It's getting better, yes.
Good.
Yes.
Well, again, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing you, I'll take the roll call vote, please, Crystal.
Ron Bacon.
Hi.
Pat Brooks.
Hi.
Rob Demmett.
Yes.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Yes.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
All right, the motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the Warwick EMS Annual Report, and it looks like Tony O'Neill will be coming up here.
I have one question.
Yes.
Stork awards, is that baby delivery?
Yes, I was going to touch on that. Tony O'Neill with Warwick EMS, wanted to just give the council a year-end report for your EMS service here in Warwick County. Warwick EMS made 700, or 7,954 runs in the county in 2024, which was about a 6% increase over last year in run volume. We had 294 students ride with us this year for training for paramedic and EMT certifications. We conducted many CPR, first aid classes for the fire departments, for the sheriff's office, police departments, and in the community. We did our annual protocol review and update, which approves our cardiac arrest and interceptus patient treatments. We do a monthly audit, review, training, and skills with our staff and with our medical director. Every month, she comes out to our EMS stations and conducts training. We purchased a new ambulance and put it in service this year. We put some cameras on the stations, all of our EMS stations, so we can monitor our en route time to ensure we get off the station and en route in a timely manner. We are working on putting a new alert dispatch system, we've installed it in three of our stations, it hasn't went into effect yet, I think we've got a couple more things out of dispatch that has to be put in yet, but it's a new alerting system that'll get us out the door even quicker than we currently are right now. Ascension started a paramedic program where they are paying for the full paramedic program, which is about a $10,000 program, to recruit paramedics for Warwick County, and so the hospitals picked that up, which I think's been a great thing for our retainment and getting, getting paramedics here in the county. We held an EMT class here in Warwick EMS for the fire departments. Most of you guys know that Ohio Township went to a paid department, and several of the fire departments needed, firefighters needed the EMT certification, so we provided a class for them to get them certified and up to date. We promoted five of our current EMTs to paramedics that went through a, went through the paramedic program that was paid by the hospital, so we've promoted five of those. We gave out four STEMI awards, STEMI awards is basically, we had crews that made a run on a massive heart attack with an artery that was 100% blocked, and time matters on that, so we have a protocol, an algorithm, that we tried to get them to a hospital within a certain window, to get them into the cath lab, and we had several of those that, that were well within that timeframe, so they got STEMI awards presented to them throughout the year. We delivered free babies here in the county this past, in 2024. We named one of our EMS people as American Legion EMS Person of the Year. The hospital also purchased a educational platform called Foam Frat, that we require our EMTs and paramedics to to do the monthly certification on those and educational, and, and that's being done. We partnered with the Pathway Career School out there, the EMT program, we provided them a primary instructor to teach the class out there, and that's gone real well, I think we had five EMTs graduate from that program last year, students, so that was pretty exciting. And lastly, we are starting to work on Lynnville's EMS station. As many of you guys know, we, that building has really not had a lot of work done to it in several years, and the commissioners allotted some money to be, to do some renovation on that, so that has started, and we expect that to go on for the next six months or so, so. And if you look at the chart, basically, it kind of tells you how our run volume kind of distributed out throughout the year. Out of the 7,954, 500, 5,315 went to local hospitals. We had about 1,100 refusals out in the field throughout the year, 434 transfers that we did inside of Warwick County. We had 548 where we had either a no patient or disregard going en route, and then we had about 500 transfers outside the county. So, any questions, Tony, do you have?
Yeah, I've got a question for you, Tony.
Yes.
So, let's just say, if you were going to take off $100,000 or $150,000 out of your budget, what kind of an impact would that have on you?
Greatly, because I think, I'm going to shoot this number off the top of your head, but I think right now, we're in, in 2024, St. Vincent's has paid $700,000 out of their pocket, even with the subsidy we get from you, so taking another 150,000 off that would be an impact.
I'm just kind of curious, because of some of the discussion, and obviously, this is not anything that you have any control over, I'm just trying to basically highlight some points here, but, you know, they're looking at making some possible adjustments to funding for local governments, and I think trying to highlight where some of these, you know, these cuts might have to be made, because, you know, you're, you know, it's not as if, you know, you're, if the cuts had to be made, obviously, we would have to try to make those in the best and most efficient way possible, with the least amount of impact on the services for the county, but, so you feel that if you had to lose 100, 150,000, it would, you know, cause an impact on the services that you're.
I think it will, yeah, I think, I think it will, I mean, our, as you can see, our run volume continues to grow here in the county. This month alone, we were, had a record month here in the county, we were 10% higher than we was last month, the year, among, last, last year this time. So, the need for the county and having adequate coverage in the county is important, and so I do, I do believe it would affect it overall.
And adding the extra unit has increased response time to, or decreased the response time.
Yes, our average response time here in the county, well, we have to, we have to factor in the northern part of the county, which hurts us a lot, because it's a, because up there, there's a, you know, could be a 15 to 20 minute response time. If we didn't have to factor in that, our response time is average about four to five minutes. If we factor in with the northern part of the county, we're at about eight minutes average, but yeah, the six truck has definitely helped, and I think if you look at the run volume down at that truck alone, is quite substantial.
All right, well, thanks, I just wanted to kind of start to get some of that information out for people, so. Appreciate it, Tony, anybody else have any questions?
Real quickly, because you mentioned about like, Ohio Township having the paid fire department, as we all know, has that had an effect on you guys with EMS?
Well, what's great about our fire departments here in our county is, is because we work close with Ascension, they provide a medical director for the fire departments, so all their protocols and everything. We train all the fire departments on our same protocols as on the ambulances, so the fact that when we had the fire departments respond with this, they know our trucks, they know our equipment, they know our protocols, and it makes a huge difference, because the cardiac arrest or those unconscious patients that we need ride-alongs, it's important to have those firefighters in the back of the truck, doing the ride-in with us, and providing CPR, whatever's needed in the back of the truck, so it, I think it's been a great asset, I, you know, I commend all the fire departments in the county. But as you guys know, Ohio Township is exploding, and that's where majority of our runs are. We've got three trucks stationed in Ohio Township alone for this whole county, because of the volume down there. So I think it's important that our fire departments are well-equipped to go with this when needed.
Do you think having the paid has helped your response time, or has it made no difference, or?
I think it's definitely helped, the fact that they're on station and can respond, there's, there's, many times they're there before we get there, because we may be coming from another district, say, medic three's out on another run, to have a paid fire department that's at station, ready to go, there, there are many times they're on on scene prior us, getting there, already starting to intervene with care.
Is that, is that considered, when they arrive, is that considered in your response time, or is that?
No.
That's what I thought, their arrival doesn't.
It does not impact our.
Your response time, it didn't impact at all, so.
All that separate, yes, if so. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Tony. All right, the next item on the agenda is Park and Recreation Business, item four A is an additional appropriation for returning $10,000.
I'm back.
You represent everybody?
Not yet. Good evening, Jeremy Elrod, President for the Parks Department. Of course, got Cliff here with me, Ben, our superintendent, is here as well. So starting the new year, Cliff, Cliff and his firm have joined to represent us on the Parks Board, and so kind of in that process, of course, the onboarding, kind of showing them who we are and what we have going on. We think we've kind of identified a need as a board, we kind of understood, we have a, what we kind of identify as a problem with a lack of budget for legal representation. I believe you guys all got a letter in your packet, so some of the details are there, so I'll just kind of broad stroke it, of course, we can discuss, ask questions, that kind of thing, but I think the moral of the story is, we've, our Parks Department's a great department, we have a lot of things going on, we've grown in size, we've got a lot of, you know, partner organizations, nonprofits, economic development, that all do a lot of great things with, you know, in conjunction with our facilities and, you know, a lot of public involvement, so with that, just kind of the nature of the beast is legal issues, questions, due diligence, those types of things. Our existing budget for the last, I think, per Ben, last 20 years, or kind of as long as we've known it, is $1,200 annually, so $50 per meeting that council attends, we feel like we've kind of grown past that, and so that's what brings us here tonight to request the additional, and I think the, the letter does a good job just kind of detailing out what, just some, some general budget hours there. We do have some kind of one-off projects, but those, we have to kind of know what we get into if we ever, you know, need additional services there, but we, we've got a lot of things in motion, we have, you know, as this board's aware, we've recently accepted AMAX, the property from, that was disannexed from town in Newburgh, you know, with that, we got two new great tenants, two organizations there, so I think that puts us up to six or seven lease agreements we have, which we're happy to have, but again, those are legal type issues, and so that's what we're here for tonight. Happy to answer any questions, and Ben knows the budget better than anyone, and then, of course, Cliff's here to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Yeah, Cliff Whitehead, obviously, attorney, so yeah, when I first spoke with Ben and Jeremy, I actually knew about some other legal issues they were facing through an insurance audit that was done, with this new carrier coming in and the new broker. They did identify some policies that the parks needed to have, and then speaking with Jeremy and Ben, I learned about more issues. There's one issue that's not highlighted on this letter with a parcel at Scales Lake, where there's currently a church there, we've already spent about, we, as our firm, 15 hours trying to work through some safety issues with that part, with that property, that we're just writing off, we're not going to charge the county or the Parks Department for that. But just like anything else, the more you ask and the more you learn, there's just more there to protect the county and the Parks Department from, the Parks Board. So to that point, knowing, knowing this board, this council, hopefully, you all do have my January 27th letter, where it does break down kind of what I saw as kind of the four issues, and then breaking down those four issues of legal needs with an estimate of hours for each of those items, again, breaking down where the money's going to go, if this, if this board does allow the Parks Department, Parks Board to have the additional legal fees. You know, I think unfortunately, you know, you get what you pay for, and $1,200 a year for an attorney, it's just, it's hard for the attorney then to be as responsive maybe as you can be when it's, you know, you're not being paid for it. And so I think some of these issues have accumulated over time, so I'd like to jump on them, and this is what I'm asking for, or the Parks Board is.
So is this coming out of county generals, is this coming out of your cash reserves, or where is this exactly coming from?
It would be coming from their cash, which they have plenty of cash, yeah, available. Uh, it, it would be coming from their cash, which they have plenty of cash, yeah, available.
It's not our County General.
It's nice just to get things out, so everybody can hear where the money is actually coming from and where.
And I think when I've read through the credentials, or your guys, like, the last couple of years, the income, net income has increased
Correct.
The last several years quite a bit.
By their cash account.
Yes. Which is pretty impressive, so.
Any other questions or comments for Jeremy or Cliff, or even Ben? I see him hiding in the back there.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by Ron.
I'll second.
And there's a second by Rob. Is there any additional discussion?
I know that the responsibilities just keep increasing out there as we are growing, which is a good thing, when we have growth, it's a sign of success. And, uh, you know, the Freedman Park and all these other things that are being added, that's going on, a lot of functions, a lot of things to be worked out. So, yeah, it's, it's different from a few years back when I remember twelve hundred dollars, because they just come to one meeting and they wouldn't have to do anything.
I guess I didn't realize that there was a separate, kind of a separation here with the Parks Department budget on the, I, I just would have assumed it was all under the retainer of the county thing, and I, I guess I'm just wrong on that.
Board is, is a different entity than, yes, yes.
I agree, it does not sound like enough money to accomplish the job.
Anything else? Is, uh, we still doing roll call, is Rick still with us? Did he come back?
He's there.
We, we lost him for a second.
Ron Bacon.
Hi.
Pat Brooks.
Hi.
Rob Demmett.
Yes.
Brad Overton.
I'm gonna abstain.
Richard Reed.
Oh.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
Thank you.
Four, five, five, one, and a one. And the one opposed was Rick Reed, and the one that abstained was Brad Overton.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And a motion, yeah, a motion. All right, the next item on the agenda is item, uh, number five, under Highway Business. Additional appropriation. Bobby asleep?
No, I was hoping that Cliff would stand up here with me too.
We got an additional appropriation, local road and street, fifty thousand dollars. Highway restricted for stone, the first one was for repairs. Stone, one million, two hundred thousand dollars. And then the third item is by Tanis, uh, one million dollars.
So to start, the repairs budget on eleven sixty-nine.
What's your name, sir?
Bobby Howard, Ford County Engineer. Think I can remember it by now. So to start with, on the eleven, eleven sixty-nine, uh, the repairs budget, I believe, um, this fifty thousand will put me back to what I've been at the last several years. But we've also had a lot of issues this first month, just with all the snowplows and spreaders, and, uh, so we've spent quite a bit on repairs already. And I'm just trying to get it back to what it was last year, which we, we didn't have enough last year, and I had to, uh, use hardware and tools and kinda stuff to try to do some stuff, but, so I'd just like to try to get it back to what it was and help offset the repair costs that we've had in January.
You might go ahead and just talk about the other ones too. If we wanna split them up, we can, but we might as well just talk.
Okay, on the other ones, that is our annual appropriation, uh, being that it's the eleven seventy-three restricted fund, it is no longer a budgeted fund that I can ask for money at budget time, so that I, I just come the February of every year and try to, uh, get it appropriated. So most of this will go toward our CCMG, which is our fifty-fifty match within that. And I've asked for one point five million dollars of that, uh, that's the max, the cap that they offer, and it will all go toward road paving.
Driving around, we're gonna need a lot of paving after this winter.
Freeslaw, freeslaw.
Any questions or comments?
The, the zone, so that's like the chip and seal.
Yeah, a lot of that's gonna be paving, some of that is chip and seal and preservation, some of that is crack, crack seal, some of that is, uh, rocking our roads, because this winter took a toll on rock roads as well.
Still have a few, got some up north.
Yeah, quite a few.
There's a couple of mine.
Yeah.
It's close, on the side of hills, it's worse than others, further seeps, it's, most pressure.
Hell, ours are pretty good.
If you live in a coal mine, no, there's no dice.
No other comments or questions for Bobby, I'll entertain a motion.
And what's, by a tenements, what, what is that?
By two minutes, it's, it's like asphalt, it's basically the asphalt.
Sorry, I, I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's just the phone name.
We got a motion on the floor by Rick Reed, is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second by Greg. All right, um, any other comments before we look for a roll call vote?
I still got a ribbon on Maple.
I know, I've seen it. Our hot mix is down right now, our, uh, that's another reason for the repairs.
Ready? Ron Bacon.
Hi.
Pat Brooks.
Hi.
Rob Demmett.
Yes.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Yes.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
All right, motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby.
Before we go on, I missed something. On the last one, Parks and Recreation, did we combine salary ordinance and the additional?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, next item on the agenda, Commissioner Business, item number six, additional appropriation, audit, uh, thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. NGS dugout, six thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Contractual Services, a hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Good evening again, Debbie Benes, Stiersman County Administrator, still doing grants as well. The first item, uh, the audit, there was fifty thousand dollars originally appropriated for federal audits for three years, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. We have paid twenty-four, I did not have any type of a contract to encumber it, so this is the balance for the next two years. The NGS dugout is Newburgh Girls Softball, uh, they had, did not have a contract. We, um, did repairs to the dugouts, it's the park on Band, Girls Softball Field. We had that much money left to buy paint, and they're gonna volunteer paint it. We didn't get the paint purchased before the end of the year, so I didn't have a contract to encumber that as well. So that's the balance that we have appropriated for them. The last one, you can change, um, we had a hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-seven cents, roughly, left at the end of the year. Uh, I originally asked to put it in contract services, but when I went back and did my reporting, I realized that's interest, so I'm only asking right now two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, and that is for a project that was appropriated by Commissioners in January to paint Judge, I think it's Roy's, uh, courtroom.
Have I got any questions or comments for Debbie?
So change a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Yeah, you can do it if you want to, but I don't, I mean, that'd be great, I don't have to come back again. But, um, yeah, that was interest, because all the original funds were committed by the end of twenty twenty-four.
And just for clarification, this is not new money from any of the
No, this is all the, our money.
We can't increase any, any of the appropriations. Just wanna, I mean, without advertising, so, yeah.
Is there any questions or comments, uh, we'll take a roll call vote?
Sure.
Motion.
I'll make a motion.
We'll take a motion. By Greg. Motion by Greg and second by Ron. All right, now we'll take that vote.
Ron Bacon.
Hi.
Pat Brooks.
Hi.
Rob Demmett.
Yes.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Yes.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes seven, zero. All right, the rest of these items are handbook policy, reimbursements, transfers, corrections. Item seven A is an additional appropriation reimbursement, uh, equipment from EMA, six thousand and fifty dollars. Item seven B, salary ordinance and appropriation, handbook policy, PSLIT, one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. It's for Deputy Director, resignation, comp hours, and PTO hours. And next item, and the next item under there is salary ordinance, handbook policy, jail, resignation of one thousand, thirty dollars and ten cents. And then there's an, uh, is that seven D falling under there as well?
Yes.
Seven D, additional appropriation, change in longevity and education premium for new employees. Education premium, five hundred dollars, longevity, one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. This is in the Treasurer's Department.
Is seven B EMA?
Yes.
Number's different, okay, thank you. So I knew they had a change there.
Anybody have any questions or comments on those items? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Rob, is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Pat. Crystal?
Ron Bacon.
Hi.
Pat Brooks.
Hi.
Rob Demmett.
Yes.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Yes.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero. Next up to Council Business and Encumbrance Resolution. Crystal, was anybody on our list that you have a chance to look?
Do you have that to read?
I do not, thanks. All right, Resolution number twenty-two-five dash zero four, a resolution of the County Council of Warwick County, Indiana, approving encumbrances from the twenty-twenty-four fiscal year. Any questions or comments about that ordinance? If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Greg, is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Ron. Crystal?
Ron Bacon.
Hi.
Pat Brooks.
Hi.
Rob Demmett.
Yes.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
No.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
Motion carries six, one, with the name as Rick Reed. And is anybody else, oh, the conflict of interest? That's just for us. That was Department Heads or something? Oh, okay, I didn't know if we were reading one of those.
I mean, I did, but I didn't, I think that you would respond to them if you need to.
You need to declare a conflict of interest, yeah. Does anybody else have any questions or comments under, uh, County Business?
Just to comment on what I've been watching with the AIC, as I mentioned the last, uh, meeting, the Senate Bill One was heard today in committee. And, uh, so the committee has heard from AIC and others, the effect of what, uh, decreasing the property tax bill, as the bill is written now, which we all know will change, what effect that's gonna have on the counties. So that was heard in committee today, there was no vote. It was just, uh, heard and, and voted on, not voted on, so it'll be at their next meeting, which will probably be the next week, if it goes that far. The Chairman has the opportunity now to hold the bill if he wants, and then, uh, the, uh, author of the bill has the opportunity to bring amendments and change it in committee. So that's kinda where we're at on that, so, so we'll just be on a wait and see.
All right, thanks for that information, Ron. And to just highlight some other impact of those areas, as I'd mentioned with Tony earlier, I mean, if we took, uh, if we were to eliminate, uh, Sheriff's deputies, I mean, that is a cost as well, so that would be another impact on the county. And I know not all of those deputies are paid out of, um, our, our public service fund, so there would be definitely an impact to that. And Sheriff, I didn't know, if you might wanna speak to what you might feel would be the impact of possibly losing, you know, five to six, or maybe seven deputies from the County General Funding, if, something like that, if you saw that as an impact to you, or if you thought that might impact the county at all, as far as the services that you're able to provide?
Sheriff Mike Wilder, uh, I mean, anytime we would lose manpower, yeah, we'd be hurting. We currently have fifty-eight deputies, but are currently really down five. I have three in the academy and two open positions, uh, so we're actually down a detective, we're down an SRO, and we're down three motor patrol officers at this time. So if you cut, you cut positions, you're really hurting us. So very few times are we ever, what we call fully staffed, the position may be filled, but it takes almost a year to get a, a new officer up and running. So, uh, the, the position may be filled, but they're truly not out doing the duties that we need them out there doing, uh, so if you cut us even more, I mean, you might be actually down ten positions than what we currently are used to. So it'd be very, you know, however, our funding would be cut, you know, just as anybody else. Public service is very safe, you know, needed, so, yeah, we would feel the impact, definitely.
So you definitely don't feel like, as far as deputy staffing, that you're overstaffed, or you need to?
We're always looking to add more, uh, you know, luckily, we were add two with school, you know, we have an SRO in almost every school, which is very beneficial. It's, I always say this, it's bad that we gotta speak that way, but it's a peace of mind, plus, uh, a very good safety, uh, that we've seen them be a very good resource, even in the elementary schools. So, and then obviously motor patrol officers, this county's contention, you know, always growing, uh, with the traffic we have along the sixty-six corridor and sixty-nine coming there, um, we have an wreck, it takes two to three officers to just block traffic and work that wreck, uh, and you only have potentially six officers out there, you're taking half of your manpower for that shift, you got domestic. I mean, things seem to always come at the same time, so, I mean, nobody wants to hear me complain, but, I mean, we could always even use more manpower, uh, 'cause like I said, even when we, we never really fully staffed, just the way that, you know, we have people leave, people retire, we have people on, uh, FMLA leave, sick leave, I mean, there's just a lot of things, you know, that affect the Sheriff's Office, so.
While you're here, I think I've already told you in back and forth and messages I've been getting over this issue, I found out that there's other police departments around that are paying more than we are. So that would, you know, if we froze salaries, that'd make things worse.
He was asking, I, I don't wanna get into, I know there's some, it's a hot button, I'm not here to, you know, people, you know, get into that all, but what I would say is, it was asked me back, have we lost deputies to other departments or to other jobs? And back in the summer, when we were doing budget, I said it hadn't really felt the effect. Well, we felt the effect, we've lost, uh, three officers, maybe, I'm trying to think, maybe four in the past six months, uh, it's two, a couple of them went to other careers, one went to EPD, so we are starting to feel that effect of when other departments are starting to pay more, or just, you know, everybody's fighting for mine, I'm not here complaining, it, but we, you know, something's been asked of me, but yes, if you freeze stuff, you take away positions, we would fill it at the Sheriff's Office, and I feel like the public would notice it also eventually, because source, resources would not be there.
All right, thanks, I mean, I just put you on the spot, but
That's okay, I mean, I don't mind speaking about my office and what, I mean, the true impacts. You know, I, I think, you know, all of us, there's always ways to try to cut money, but we always, you know, what, what are we gonna lose when we do that, it's always, at least needs to be discussed.
Well, I feel like ever since that I've been on this board, I mean, we've worked really well with the Sheriff's Office to come up with incentives to not only retain people, but to get new people, and we've worked with that public safety funding to help, but that, we can't, that can't fund everything. I mean, that funds other, uh, you know, that's funding the cost of the jail, that's also, money has to be distributed. And I think that, uh, you know, I think we're doing the best we can, and I think we've tried to get you up to a level as, you know, as
Close to fully staffed as, you know, possible, as possible.
The council, no matter who's sat on it, has been good over the last several years. And just the other day, uh, Ron Bacon came out to one of our trainings, appreciate him coming out and seeing the equipment and some things we may be asking for, but it's kinda nice to have firsthand knowledge of that. Greg came out to the jail site the other day, walked it with us. So as I say to any of you, you can call me and you're invited out there, but I'd always appreciate when people do come out and kinda see, that makes it easier when I'm up here asking or describing some of the things that are going on. Would love to have you guys involved as much as any times you can, so appreciate those guys and anyone else that wanna come out.
All right, thanks, Lush.
Thank you.
Faced with some increased costs too, because when they open up the new jail, you've got the old jail because when they open up the new jail, we've got the old jail sitting over here, and we're going to have to take care of and do something with too.
And we did, I did circulate that letter, I had Crystal circulate that letter that we had draft. I don't know if all of the council would be in favor of, you know, voicing our displeasure with cuts to, uh, funding, if you all would be in, you know, agreement with sending that letter out. Has everybody had a chance to read that?
I have not.
I have not.
Okay.
I didn't, I did not get an email with the actual letter.
Oh, did I not?
I got the email with the, for you guys to provide input.
Right, that one, I didn't know, so is everybody, I didn't know if anyone had any additional input to the letter that was drafted by Rhett, that doc, or, you know, that resolution that we put together?
I sent it. I don't think that that was attached. I don't think what you're talking about was attached.
I didn't see it.
So, maybe you need to send it to me again.
Let me send it to you again, because I thought that it was, I was wondering why I hadn't heard anything from that one, so.
The big, the big thing is, we've got to figure out a way of fairly with the taxes, because the property tax formula is so, it's so complicated. It's causing all this turmoil. And property taxes are bad. And if there's another way that's more fair, then what the state legislature would do is, I think they should offer some other choices. All this property tax money, people don't realize this, stays here locally. It's collected locally, and it's distributed locally. It doesn't go to the state. The state does have approval of our budgets and things like that, but the money's not going up to Indianapolis like the public service money is. Economic development money goes up to Indianapolis, and they distribute it back to us in the income taxes. So, you know, there, there's got to be a way to get through this. And I think we all just need to think about it and think outside the box, try to present things, and maybe we can help the situation with the property taxes.
Yeah, and I think it's, you know, not using a, you know, a hammer and perhaps using a scalpel or a smaller instrument to make some changes is always.
Yeah.
I mean, to start small and then work up, that's definitely better than to start from the, you know, cut the legs off and then try to put the legs back on to things. So, I think, you know.
The way it's written now, the, the letter that you probably saw, and all of you saw, is anywhere between $9 and $12 million will be cut. In fact, it even went out to $13 million in that last year, will be cut from our current funding. And that's the whole county, that's school corporation, everybody, and I realize that. But we oversee $34 million of the, the amount. So, if you start cutting from $34 million, say it's $6 million. That's a lot of services that are going to be cut. And these are services we can't provide from ourselves. I mean, I want a policeman to come, my house is being broken into. And if my house is on fire, I want a fireman to arrive. And I don't want them to come up to me and say, well, this would be cash or charge. Because that was one proposal that was knocked about in some of these Facebook.
But also, we have to, I mean, Greg and I went to the meeting last Saturday, and it was well attended, and we put out our opinions and what we thought was going on, and everyone else did too. And we understand how the public feels about this, because they're being hit with the property tax. But I think we're helping to make them understand what it's used for and, and why it's there. We don't like it, I don't like it, Greg doesn't like it, and I'm sure everyone here doesn't like it. It's not something we, we, we want, but we still have to have a way to provide services. By getting to the legislatures, the senators and that, we need to continue talking to them so that they, they keep saying they're going to give us the tools to continue to do what we need without property taxes. But I haven't seen that part of the legislation yet. So, that's what concerns both of us deeply. And, uh, and having been in the legislature for 10 years, I know it's going to come later. And I realize the, the budget bill will be where it's going to be. And that's going to be the very last thing that they do. So, but we've got to continue talking to our senators and our state reps to let them make sure that they understand what's going to happen and what we need for them to do to help their constituents.
If they do provide something extra, it may be some hard ground for us to tread on, because it may mean local taxes will have to be generated through income tax or something else. Now, sales tax is a fair tax, I think.
But they're going to give us supposedly other ways to do it. But the state's not the one, they're going to be the one to feel it. We're the ones that are going to feel it, and we're the ones that are going to have to do whatever they're going to give us to take care of the constituents and provide the services in the county. So, long way to go yet.
All right, anybody else got any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Rick's ready.
Rick's attorney.
I think his wife just prodded him awake.
Oh, you signed?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, I thought it was.
I thought you said somebody.
I thought it was, I may have read it wrong. I'm sorry.
Oh.
Oh.
We haven't voted.
Sorry, I thought, I thought.
Didn't vote on it.
No, sorry, I thought that we, that this was already covered. Sorry, didn't mean to bypass you.
All good, all good.
Glad you raised your hand.
My name is Zach Copley. I'm a constituent here in Warwick County. And I was just wanting to discuss something that I have read about for a while, but I wanted to get some clarification on. So, we can all agree that there's no greater place to live than the United States of America. But our freedoms do come at a price, and we need to be able to defend those from enemies, both foreign and domestic. And I'm happy to see that Warwick County recognizes that through our designation as a Second Amendment sanctuary county. But I wanted to get some clarification on that. What does the enforcement of that ordinance look like? In terms of if that ever does need to be put in place because of some sort of law that gets passed by the federal or state government that infringes on people's Second Amendment rights? What does that look like in terms of county enforcement?